Call the meeting of county council order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Optional prayer, Mrs. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. It is a season of expectation and great celebration. Batteries will run down, the Christmas tree will soon turn brown. Still, one present glows bright with heavenly light. This will continue year-round with love and kindness. We desire not to be distracted, but to listen to the people of divided ideas. God, help us to be faithful and keep our priorities clear. Give us the strength and courage to open our eyes and hearts to the best we can do. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Law. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Mr. Horton? Mr. Leon?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Chairman Faust?
Here.
Here, the public, anybody from the public wish to be heard tonight? Nobody has called in ahead of time, that would get five minutes, but anybody sitting in the audience would like to speak tonight, you can have three minutes, if you choose. Anybody? Okay. Moving on to minutes of the previous meeting, we have none, so reports of county officials, the county executive and/or her designee.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Sparber. Finance committee, Mrs. Fatika.
Yes, the finance committee met January 4th and agreed to put forth on the agenda old business items A, B, C, and D, and then their new business items A through P.
Any questions for Mrs. Fatika? She would prefer none, the way she feels. Personnel committee, there is no reports, or reports of other county officials. Mr. Leon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some issues that are involved with J.CAC and G.DAC are complex and need further review. These issues can and will be resolved at some point in time. At the last meeting I attended with staff from the J.CAC board and their CEO, it proved to me that J.CAC is completely divorced from G.DAC. The CEO is one of the most honest individuals I have had the pleasure of meeting. The problem at hand is council has restricted funds necessary to run this operation. I am requesting that council approve the ordinance that replaces these funds so J.CAC can operate its services without any problems. Now, however, because of the AG's audit, I am recommending tabling this resolution. I'm sorry, it is an ordinance. In the future, we need to review the services and determine any changes needed to continue the operation of J.CAC. I note in the information I received that, from a previous council member, that the CEO, Mr. Jones, is listed as J.CAC CEO and G.DAC CEO. How was this mistake made? We just talked to Mr. Jones today, and Mr. Jones assured us that he is not the CEO of G.DAC. He is the CEO of J.CAC. I wonder, based on this report, it seems that the individual that prepared it has some outside interest. Mr. Chairman, the other issue with the J.CAC, as I've said during our caucus, I believe it's completely unfair for the auditor general to come in and say that, you know, we have a problem there. Unless they can identify that problem, not only the auditor general, but also the county controller, let's identify the problem. And if there isn't a problem with J.CAC, then I believe they should say so, because I think that they've maligned J.CAC quite a bit. And I'm a little disappointed in that, because I believe J.CAC does an excellent service for this community and has done an excellent service for the community in the past. That was my first report. The next one is the ordinance that I propose for representation to the ECRB board for the county executive is based on my concern and feelings for proper representation. When I voted for the community college, I was inundated with calls and emails opposing the issue. I felt perhaps I should rescind my vote and bring it back to the council floor. After careful consideration, I realized that this vote for the community college was the right thing to do. To this day, I receive calls asking me why. I can only state my reason. Without the community college and economic development, any economic development plans for future changes, this county would eventually become impossible for this county. Businesses have to have the opportunity to locate in an area where they feel they can continue to train and educate their employees without fear of having not just untrained employees, but the possibility of closing because of the lack of trained personnel. Having said that, I believe in the concept of having a two-way street in this government. So this is the reason I put the ordinance in, for the county executive to have representation on the ECRB board. And believe me, tonight, I also put in another first reading of a resolution that would give the county executive two appointments on the industrial development authority, and I'm going to look to see if there's any other area. I don't think there is. I think we've been researching it and unfortunately haven't found anything. My other report, as far as the land bank is concerned, I want to thank Dr. Faust, because in reading his proposal, I always felt the work he put in and the proposal he had was a good one. I was opposed and will continue to be opposed to putting it under the ECRB board. Many feel that my concerns are about the CEO of ECRB. They are not. My concerns are with the board. The board has to have control, and if they agree to everything the CEO requests, then I can't blame him, I have to blame the board. I never felt the law that was passed from the Senate providing ECRB as a land bank representative. I never liked it, and I thought it was wrong. Hence, my reason for voting for the county executive's proposal. I am now further concerned, because I believe paranoia seems to be running rampant in the ECRB board. Their concerns not to appoint Mr. Logue to the board concerns me. I believe we have to have a state audit in reference to the funds that were used by ECRB. The attorney general is supposedly auditing J.CAC and hopefully G.DAC. I'm not going to relate anymore to that, but I believe that, you know, to me, all of the issues that are going on, I'm a little disappointed at all of the lobbying that goes on by the ECRB and some of their members, and not only some of their members, but also the CEO, and I feel that this is entirely wrong. But it seems, I'm very suspicious when that happens, and I wonder, sometimes where there's smoke, there's fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Mrs. Fatika?
Yes. On January 7th, I had the honor of hosting, along with State Representative Ryan Bizarro, Team Rubicon at Bizarro's Ringside Restaurant. It was a wonderful event. These individuals that have been here working to help us in what we refer to as the snow mageddon, explained that when they go in to help, oftentimes there's a tornado, and it happens. There's a flood, and it happens, and they strive to work. In this case, we just kept getting snow, so it was an unusual situation for them to be involved in. A citation was presented on behalf of county council. Councilwoman Law and Councilwoman Rastetter were in attendance. A citation was given on behalf of State Representative Ryan Bizarro, and a proclamation was given from Mill Creek Township supervisors. It was interesting to note that one of the local volunteers who's working for Erie Insurance in the disaster program was actually given time away from his job so that he could be involved with this, and his name is Matthew Sanders. He's working very hard to start a local group, and I just wanted to report it to, again, extend a thank you to Team Rubicon. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Fatika.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Anderson.
I'd like to just make a comment in regards to the J.CAC situation and us this evening moving towards tabling it for the next meeting. I would say that I feel very strongly that Danny Jones, and certainly appreciate his willingness to come in and speak with us, certainly satisfied any and all questions that we could possibly have as to where J.CAC stands. It's clearly two separate organizations between J.CAC and G.DAC. I feel very confident in the leadership of Danny Jones and the strategies and plans that he's putting forward to move that organization forward for the next 10 to 15 years. And I certainly support J.CAC. I am concerned that we would once again table the issue, because I think it hurts the end user, who are the local people in our community that need those services. But I am willing to go along for one more meeting, as Danny Jones expressed to us, would not be harmful. But I will be pushing forward to make sure those funds are released at our next meeting, and want to make sure that any type of criteria we ask to put forward with any nonprofit that comes to us for grants is done fairly and across the board, and no one organization is picked out to have to provide something more than any other organization. I think that would set a bad precedent, and I will not be in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. In regard to the procedure about applying rules to one nonprofit or the other, I would agree that, and this is something that I talked about in the budget deliberations, that I talked about in our meeting previous, that we need to come up with some criteria, I think it's very simple, that we ask them, ask any nonprofit that point-blank, what is the purpose of the funds? What are the goals that you're going to achieve? How is it going to positively impact the community? And then how are you going to be able to tell us how those goals are going to be met? And then following the grant appropriation into the next year, we need to require, and I think we need to do this by ordinance, that the, this whole procedure anyway, that the organization that received the grant needs to do some sort of close-out report where they can state, this is the money that we spent, but maybe we didn't spend it all, who knows what? And then did we or did we not achieve our goals? And just because they did not achieve our goals doesn't necessarily mean that that's a bad thing, and they wouldn't be eligible for a grant in the future. Maybe time constraints got in the way or something. But we need to come up with a procedure that every grantee, whether large or small, has to go through to just infuse more accountability. As I said in the back, our grants to other organization process really has nothing more than a local walking-around money type of venture, and it has to stop. And that isn't casting aspersions on any organization that's received monies, that somehow they misuse the money, or that a council member who may have sponsored it, because that's oftentimes where it starts, had some nefarious, you know, motive up their sleeve. That's not it at all. But we just need to have some additional accountability into that procedure and so forth, that I will certainly vote to table that ordinance as well, so we can get that information. To me, if we release this money at the next meeting for J.CAC, those things have to be in place for this particular grant, because that'll be the starting point, in my opinion. Okay, moving on to old business, Mr. Smith, possible override of veto of ordinance number seven, I'm sorry, ordinance number 26. Entitle only, please.
Authorizing the organization of the Neighborhood and Infrastructure Revitalization Fund, NRF, and governing board.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon.
A move for the override?
Moved by Mr. Leon, second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Law. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon.
Obviously, my move is to create this to a vote. I will vote no. And a vote no means that I'm sustaining her veto. A vote yes means I do not. I will vote no in this particular case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Any other discussion?
Yeah, in this case, a yes vote moves to override the veto, which I will be voting this way. I, you know, we obviously are going to have differences of opinion as to what is the best course of action going forward regarding the land bank and the different issues that surround it. But one of the things that I do not see in the county executive's plan, it doesn't show a lot of creativity to be able to tackle the myriad of problems that we have facing this community that are all associated with blight. Blight is not just residential properties, it's also, sometimes it's anchor businesses within that neighborhood that the residents it flows from, and I don't see a lot of creativity from the county executive's side of things in that regard, so I will be voting to override the veto. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the vote to override, Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Mr. Leon?
No.
Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Okay, so the veto was sustained. Mr. Smith, ordinance number one, I'm sorry, possible veto, override of veto, and ordinance number 141.
Ordinance number 141, 2017, repeal of ordinance 124, 2017.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon?
Moves override?
Moved by Mr. Leon?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Law. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon.
Again, same issue, I will vote no. I want to sustain her veto. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Any members of council, other members of council? I will be voting to override this veto, because this is a particular issue that is very worrisome to me. The, I have a lot of respect for Mr. Leon, and I like him personally even greater than that, just as somebody to be around to talk and discuss, but we have very different opinions on this particular issue. I do not agree that the expansion of these boards is just for proper representation. And I will ask everybody in this room, do you think these ordinances to expand these boards would have occurred had Mr. Olagiri won the election? If you can answer that with a straight face, yes, then by all means, you vote with a clear conscience to expand these boards. But that is not the reason why. And I would agree with the motivations of why these boards are being expanded, in regard to ECRB especially. There is a movement afoot, in my opinion, to remove the executive director, and even more importantly than that, is to make that authority come the heel of county council to carry out the political wishes of county council. Boards and authorities are set up as a firewall from the political elected officials to make sure that they can do their business, but not have to be unduly pressured by the elected officials to fulfill whatever their electoral needs may be. And I believe more than anything else, that's the reason why these particular boards are being expanded. And there's already, again, another movement afoot to call into question the integrity of, and board members already that are on ECRB. And the more the merrier, as far as I'm concerned with the expansion of these boards, that's what these people have in mind, anyway, and I don't think that's right. I've said in the back, and I will say it out here tonight, for the public, for the cameras, whoever, council, county council is moving in a direction away from the way we have practiced and done our business in the past, and it is not a positive movement, in my opinion. And for that reason, I will be voting to override this veto. Mr. Leon.
Mr. Chairman, I've always respected your opinion, but again, as far as I'm concerned, it's only your opinion. And if Mr. Olagiri would have been there, I'd have still put in the ordinance to put two more people from the county executive's office. I didn't care whether it's Dahl Kemper, Olagiri, or anyone else. I always felt it's fair to have the county executive, who's also involved in the administration of this government, to have some kind of a say there. And as far as you're concerned in saying that this is a move to get rid of the executive director, those are the same rumors I keep hearing from board members and other individuals in order to try and keep off certain individuals from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Sincerity is always subject to proof, and everybody has opinions. We will see what happens in the future. I would say to the media that if you want to see where a lot of action is, to see which one of us may be right in the future. I think attending ECRB meetings in the future might be the place to be, rather than most of these council meetings. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the override of ordinance 141, Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Mr. Leon?
No.
Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Chairman Faust?
Yes.
Go ahead. Entitle only, please.
Ordinance 142, 2017, repeal of ordinance number 126 of 2017.
Anybody want to move that?
So move for the override?
Mr. Leon, moved by Mr. Leon, seconded by Mrs. Law. Any discussion?
Same issue, same answer. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the override of ordinance number 142, Mr. Leon?
Yes, or sorry, no.
Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Chairman Faust?
Yes.
Okay, possible override of ordinance number 143, Mr. Smith, title only.
Ordinance 143, 2017, authorizing the organization of the Neighborhood and Infrastructure Revitalization Fund, NRF.
So move for override?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon, seconded by Mrs. Law. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon.
Same issue, I will vote no. Thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
On the override of ordinance 143, Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Mr. Leon?
No.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leon.
At this time, I would like to put an ordinance to create Erie County Land Bank under item two, which is at the end of the decision.
I'll second that.
Do we have a number for that ordinance, Mr. Leon?
Uh, no, I don't. There will be.
Mr. Smith?
It would be ordinance three.
Ordinance number three?
What is it, ordinance number three?
Yes, sir.
I didn't have one.
Okay, there is a motion to amend tonight's agenda by adding that.
I'll second.
Ordinance on our agenda, and it's seconded by Mr. Anderson. Is there any discussion regarding amending the agenda? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
To amend the agenda, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Chairman Faust?
Yes.
Moving on to new business, first reading of ordinance number one, in title only, please.
First reading of ordinance number one, 2018, amending Erie County Industrial Development Authority Article II, Section 5D1CII of the Administrative Code of Erie County, previously amended by ordinance number 124, 2017.
You don't want to table it now, you just want to, the J.CAC?
Which one? You read ordinance number one.
That was number one.
Yes, sir. I'm about to read ordinance two. That would be J.CAC.
Actually, technically, we don't even need to table it, as long as we're not going to vote on it tonight. You know what I mean? We're going to vote on the next one, anyway.
Sure, two. Okay.
So, while we, first read, I'm sorry, a first reading of ordinance number two, in title only, please.
Okay. A first reading of ordinance number two, 2018, 2018 Gaming Fund Budget, revised revenue and expenditures of $719,806 from release of restricted J.CAC grant.
Thank you. I think we all maybe assumed we were going to move that to a second tonight, so that achieves the same effect. Next is a possible adoption of resolution number one, please, in title only, Mr. Smith.
Resolution number one, 2018, approving selection of Civic Plus as the vendor for county council agenda management software.
Council move?
Second. Moved by Mr. Leon, seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Any discussion? I just think this will be a big step forward for council to organize our meetings and get a lot more information out in clearer terms to the citizens of Erie County, so I look forward to utilizing it, and I know our staff is excited to be able to use it as well. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Leon.
I don't know if you agree with me, but I'd like to put item T through P. Is one motion to adoption, or you want to remove that?
No, I want to, we'll do Mr. Logue separate. That'd be my request.
Then I'll vote with item F through P.
Okay, let's vote on items, or actually, does anybody second Mr. Leon's motion?
No.
I second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Law to, we will vote in one motion, because there really isn't any discussion regarding items, where, D? I don't think you included D in your motion, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, D.
I'm sorry, I didn't. I would like to include D, but it's our.
Mrs. Law, do you second?
I second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Law to, we will vote on items D, and then items F through...
P.
Oh, I'm sorry, P, with one vote, because there shouldn't be any concern about those. Any discussion regarding those particular appointments? Just one thing that I did mention at finance, Mrs. Rosdick, whose appointments to authorities in the past I had opposed because she was a county employee, I think she can bring some, that obviously is not the case anymore, I think she can bring some expertise to the ECRB board, and I told her then, I wished her luck, and hopefully she will be able to make that positive impact. Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
On the appointments, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Faust?
Yes.
Okay, Mr., somebody want to move?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Under our next item, I would like to ask my colleagues to join in with me and make a motion to waive the rules of the Administrative Code, Article 5, Section 5D1A through C, the Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority, including any reference to residency requirements.
Moved by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Leon. Is there any discussion regarding this appointment?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rastetter.
I appreciate the way, the way that you and Mr. Leon have talked about this and your feelings about it, but in order to move the people's business forward, I have to vote yes.
Okay. Tom, just explain to me how something as simple as moving an item from one reading to a second requires a supermajority, which you indicated in the back, waiving our council rules doesn't.
Because one, there's a direct language I need to chart here.
Any further discussion on Mr. Logue's appointment? Okay, again, I, those that may not know me all that well, I'm going to say what I said before out here. I'm not going to hide it in the back. The way that this appointment has come about is I am not pleased with at all, and that has nothing to do, I'm not casting aspersions on Mr. Logue, or assuming he has some sort of nefarious motive up his sleeve, although I have my doubts, and we will see what happens. But we go back to our last meetings of county council in 2017, the reappointment of the person in this particular district was held up when four years previous, we voted in the exact opposite manner. Mr. Logue does not live in the district. I think the people of Erie County ought to ask, and I have a lot of respect, Mr. Anderson and I have been friends for a long time, and I have a lot of respect for his expertise that he's going to bring to council, but I just find it curious that practically on the first day of the job, his first appointment is somebody who doesn't even live in the district. And I just, I have to question that. I'm concerned about that. And I've said it before in the back, and I've said it out here again, we are headed in a direction, as an Erie County council, that is not making me feel comfortable. I think it's a direction that is exact opposite of what we've done in the past. And I think, as I said at our last meeting, a lot of these board appointments, they're being made to create political mischief, to bring these boards and authorities to the political heel of this council. Everybody on this board may disagree with me. That's fine. I've lost votes before. It's not going to be any nose, skin off my nose. skin off my nose. But I'm going to stand up for what I believe is right every time. I don't care if I get outvoted six to one each and every time. The public's going to know where I feel and where I stand, and if that offends them, or if that offends my members of, my fellow members of County Council, I'll apologize in advance. That's not my intention from the start. But I'm going to have my voice heard, and when I think, think something is afoot, and it's something is going on that I don't particularly like, I'm going to say so. And I'm going to say it in the back, and I'm going to say it up here. Mr. Smith, roll, yes, Mr. Leon.
I understand your comments, but we always talk about what we're doing now. There are seven appointments, as I mentioned to you previously, that are not in their district. At one time, I was very adamant, and I still am very adamant, about saying that we should have a person that lives in the district there, but I didn't make that decision not to do that. Others have done it, and I didn't hear your comments then, as I hear now. So to me, for you to say that you really have nothing against this individual, I don't understand it, and I don't believe it.
That's your right to do so. The big difference is that those other times, when a person didn't live in the district, it was made upfront to all the members of council. If that was the case, that wasn't the case here. And that's just one of those things, that's not the way it should be done, and that doesn't sit well with me, and that's the way I feel. Mr. Smith, roll call.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Anderson.
I'd like to make a comment. I have the utmost respect for Attorney Tony Logue, for his commitment to this community, for his commitment to being involved, involved as a volunteer, and in helping move our community forward. Attorney Logue has lived and owns a business in that district. I find it, as you said, Mr. Chairman, really suspicious that this appointment in particular seems to be the most important business that has happened during the election of 2017. I've been lobbied by dozens of people to reappoint the former member, and I have great respect for Mr. Yaple as well. But when I see council move on four different occasions to attempt to appoint somebody whose term has not even expired yet, and to not wait and give respect to an incoming councilman when, in fact, they're lobbying me for that same appointment, it really makes me wonder what it is that the agenda is being pushed for. I find Tony Logue to be a gentleman of fair and equitable nature. I believe him to be one who is, wants to work with the organization, wants to work with the staff there, wants to work with the director there, and wants to make sure that the public money, and yes, it is public money that we're using, that the public money is being spent in a fashion that is the most fair and equitable for us as the ultimate authority who has the accountability and responsibility over those funds. I think Tony Logue is a man who will make sure he takes that responsibility very seriously, and I am honored, honored, to make my first appointment be Mr. Logue. Thank you.
Any other members of council? Roll call, please. Mr. Smith.
On the appointment, Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Faust?
No.
Okay, ordinance first-
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I ask for just a clarification?
Sorry, we skipped one. Go ahead.
I just want to make sure that we did this correctly or that I understand. The motion that we made and seconded was to waive the Administrative Code.
Correct. Thank you for that. We voted on waiving the rules. Okay, so that's-
So now you wanted to vote on the appointment.
Any further comment on Mr. Logue's appointment? Okay, so, I'm sorry, do we have a motion to move, to approve his appointment?
I'd like to make that motion.
Moved by Mr. Anderson?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Law. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Faust?
No.
Okay, first reading of ordinance number, ordinance number three in title only.
A first reading of ordinance number three, 2018, an ordinance to create the Erie County Land Bank.
Council stands adjourned.